Good evening. My name is Dean Vallone. I'm the president of the Lower Allen Township Board of Commissioners, calling this regular meeting of our Board of Commissioners of December 23rd, 2024 to order. Proof of publication is available for this meeting for your review. We begin our meetings with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. We'll pray. We pray this day to give thanks for all the many blessings bestowed upon our township. Watch over us who are entrusted with the administration of this township, creating us the earnest desire to serve faithfully and permit us to experience the joys of noble service completed for our residents, encourage cooperation from those who are served and from those who serve, help us to use every willing service and every effort put forth for good government. Heavenly Father, we ask your guidance to help us as commissioners to make the right decisions, and we ask that you aid our staff as they perform the daily tasks of running our township, and we request that you be by our first responders as they protect our residents and see that they return home safe at the end of each day. In your name we pray. Amen. I would also...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here this evening, staff and, of course, commissioners and everybody. We're in the holiday season. We're 23rd of December, and there's a lot going on in our lives and family, but we're dedicated public servants, and we're here to do business, end of year business, most of it, for the township. And I would just like to make a special note that this evening represents our township manager's last public meeting of his career here in Lower Allen Township of 37 years, Mr. Tom Grinow. Over the last several weeks, folks have had a good opportunity to wish Tom well in his retirement. And again, Tom, we certainly wish you well and look forward to having conversations with you about the township as it moves forward. And thank you again for all your dedicated service. And we'll be thinking of you throughout this meeting tonight to try to take it easy on you if you have some bad news for us.
I have no bad news.
Good.
Becky has all bad news.
And with that, we... On our agenda this evening, we have many items. We have a lot of housekeeping items that we'll be going through, some of which is appointments into 2025 for various boards and commissions. And when we get to those this evening, we'll go through them one at a time. There's no meeting minutes from our last meeting available for this meeting for approval, and I would just assume that they would be available at the first meeting in January for approval. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes, there should be.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Commissioners, the first order of business then on our agenda is our consent agenda. There's quite a few items on there, including... Oh, thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Number three on our agenda this evening is audience participation. Is there anyone joining us here this evening that would like to participate on any agenda item? No. Thank you. And good evening to you. Yes. That's my wife, by the way. Moving on to our consent agenda, any commissioner, staff member, or anyone in attendance who would like to have an item on the consent agenda removed for further discussion can request so now. Is there a request for the removal of any item on the consent agenda?
Mr. President, if no objection, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown and a second from Vice President Karen. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Since we approved that, I would just like to say thank you to the new Finance Director, as you can see, commissioners, and to the public also. We have several registers from the township, various of the credit card that is used for smaller purchases and some other purchases in the township that are required that are difficult to use, make by check. And, Ms. Director, we certainly appreciate the hard work that goes into getting these out to us. And from what I understand, we're going to expect to see these on a frequent, more frequent basis.
Yes. They will become monthly. Here at the end of the year, you may have two in one month. But it's always, it's paid a month behind. So October Statement closed, it's drafted in November, and then that's why you see October as the last one, because that was the last draft. So November Statement closed, it's going to be drafted here in the next two days. And then we will get all of those statement items in. But with end of year and starting when you know, it's still a little busy. So...
Okay.
You may have Decembers and, or Novembers and Decembers in January together. But the goal is for them to become monthly, so you see them.
Okay, terrific. And commissioners, I just want to let you know, if you haven't already, I had a discussion with the director when these came to us, just about some of the information on them, how to figures, how to read some of it, and all of that and understand it. And she gave me a very nice tutorial on understanding it, how they get accounted for each item on those, on the register, and in general, how each month's charges and as a whole kind of go off into their own account. So it's a very good piece of information for me to have, and I would encourage the other commissioners to do that when they have time. So thank you again, Director, for putting all that together. Moving on to the President this evening, we have three ordinances. I will go one at a time. I'd be looking to accept a motion to enact ordinance 2024-03, amending Chapter 180 Solid Waste and replacing it with a new Chapter 180 Solid Waste to comply with current Act 101 municipal recycling requirements. And commissioners, I'm sure you all recall, we have gone through this with staff over the last couple of months and discussed it at some prior public meetings.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to enact ordinance 2024-03, amending Chapter 180 Solid Waste and replacing it with a new Chapter 180 Solid Waste to comply with the current Act 101 municipal recycling requirements.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner... Oh, I beg your pardon. I have a motion from Commissioner Brown. Ms. Secretary, would you please take a roll call, starting with Commissioner Schwartz?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Aye.
Commissioner Karen?
Aye.
President Vallone?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nagy?
Aye.
Motion carries, five to zero. Next on the agenda, I'd be looking to accept a motion to enact ordinance 2024-04, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Lower Allen Township, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the municipal government during the fiscal year. And just to point out for the public's information, this is essentially our 2025 budget that we've been vetting for several months here at our public meetings and special budget public meetings. And commissioners, if you, if somebody has any specific questions or wants to open up discussion, perhaps in motion, and then before I would ask the, for the roll call on the question, we can have discussion, of course.
Mr. President, I would just like a sort of a brief summary of any changes that were made since the budget was tabled or placed on the table.
There was one typo on the general fund. There was in the revenue section or a transfer from the, from the fire fund that wasn't, shouldn't have actually been there. It doesn't change the bottom line. It's still, the expected surplus is still the same. It was just a, you know, I forget the dollar amount, 1.7078 million, I think, was included as a transfer in from the fire capital fund for the payment of the fire engine, although the fire engine's actually being purchased out of the fire capital fund, so no transfer was necessary.
So...
That's the only change. It's in that one line item. That 1.078 million is not shown as a transfer in from the fire fund anymore.
So it's my understanding that there is no change to the bottom line?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that, it wasn't, that amount wasn't counted in in the first place. It was just, it just showed up there in the line item.
So commissioners, is there any other questions in general on the 2025 budget?
Mr. President, if nothing else, I make a motion to enact ordinance 2024-04, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Lower Allen Township, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of municipal government during the fiscal year 2025.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, and if there are any other questions or comments, commissioners, now would be a good time. I'm going to have one at this time. So to the Finance Director and perhaps the Township Manager, just in general, would you just describe, you know, based on this budget and looking at the numbers and the capital funds, the, how you describe in general the, you know, the financial health of our township right now in '25, and potentially, you know, if all things stayed equal and we stayed with our budgets, would we, you know, would we be in that same kind of financial health moving into '26 or '27?
I would say we should be. If there's, there's a good amount of actual cash, so we're staying with our budget. We continue there with a good health.
I would expect, so the, how do you describe financial health? I mean, we've got a lot of fund balance. However, you've got costs going up and revenues going up a little bit because of our additional construction out in the Lisburn area. But eventually, your expenditures are going to catch up with your revenue. So, you know, unless you find another revenue source, you can look at probably a possible tax increase within the next five years. I know you asked for a new financial plan since we're in the last year of the one that Mr. Grove put together, which I think Ms. Knoll explained she would have to prior to the next budget session, probably around August. That's when you're going to have to look at questions about, you know, spending and try to take a projection on where revenues are going and where expenditures are going. And this was, this was all explained when we did the last financial plan back in 2019, 2020, was that, you know, this is not forever. This is the next five years, and costs continue to go up, revenues not as quickly. So at some point, you hit a juncture where, you know, another real estate tax increase may be indicated, but it's hard to say without doing the analysis. So, I mean, we're healthy, but just the trends are what they are. We, tough to turn those around.
Okay. And so, I mean, our budgeting is, I mean, I feel, our budgets have been really solid in the last several years, for sure. I mean, looking at our numbers as we've kind of come through this budget cycle, I don't think anyone was anticipating any sort of tax increase. And, you know, in conversations with staff through the budget process with management, you know, it seems like the departments are getting pretty much what they need, what they want to continue the really good level of services in the township that we have. And so, I mean, this really seems like a good budget, and if you're reinforcing something that I believe I understood, you know, last year and the year before, that we might not have to look at a tax increase for the residents, you know, over the next several years, but maybe beyond that. I mean, we'd be pushing, you know, seven, eight years, nine years, maybe, without one. And so, I mean, I think that that's quite an achievement in itself. So, I mean, I'm thrilled that, of course, this budget doesn't even come close to asking for a tax increase for our residents, and that it sounds like if we, you know, continue to just keep our, the controls we have, which seem to be working well with what we understand staff's needs or the department's needs are, it seems like we're in pretty good financial health, as far as I'm concerned. And our fund balance, obviously, is quite high as municipal governments go. And I would be interested in, you know, the coming year as we look at maybe a new plan, you know, maybe where we would have some, some needs that we've talked about in the past. I know we came through a pandemic, but like with roads and things like that, and I know liquid fuels monies are going to start to dwindle. And, you know, roads are something that people drive on every single day, and I would, I would hope that we could, again, if we do, if it, if it doesn't hurt our really good financial health too much in the township, I would certainly like to look at some of those type of things moving into next year and beyond, that we can reinvest into our communities. So. But thank you for, to everybody who, you know, can, can vouch for and, you know, stand behind this, really, what seems to be a very solid budget and financial position that the township's in. So.
Mr. President, I do have one brief question. Just sort of a reminder, and sorry if we went over this the last time we were looking at all of this. On the second page of the, of the document at the top, under other financing sources, I was curious, what comprises that figure under general fund? Are those transfers from the, from other funds or from?
Yes.
Okay.
They're transfers in from other funds.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I appreciate it. It just looks a lot different than the more detailed spreadsheet that we go over regularly. So that was all. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments, commissioners? I have a motion on passing this budget for 2025. And, Ms. Secretary, if you'll take a roll call, and you can start with me if you'd like.
President Vallone?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nagy?
Aye.
Commissioner Karen?
Aye.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Aye.
Motion carries, five to zero. Thanks, everybody, again, for the work that went into our budget this year. I know that we're in transition with some management, particularly thank you to the Finance Director who's come on this year and picked up some pieces, but also was able to put together a solid budget for us. Thank you. Moving on our agenda, it would be 5C. I'd be looking to accept the motion to enact ordinance 2024-05, an ordinance of the township of Lower Allen, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, amending the codified ordinances of Lower Allen Township 1997 as amended Section 32-7, dealing with compensation of the township manager.
I have a motion, Mr. President.
Yes.
To accept ordinance 2024-05, ordinance of the township of Lower Allen, Cumberland County, amending codified ordinances of Lower Allen Township 1997, Section 32-7, dealing with compensation of the township manager.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Nagy. Is there any questions, comments, or any discussions, commissioners? Hearing none. Ms. Secretary, will you take a roll call, starting with Commissioner Nagy, please?
Commissioner Nagy?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
President Vallone?
Aye.
Commissioner Karen?
Aye.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Aye.
Motion carries, five to zero. And the next several appoint, or next several items on the agenda this evening are appointments for the various boards and commissions to the township. And just for the public's information, we'll take these one at a time as well. And I'll just make the comment that this year, it seems all of these are highly recommended by the various chair, chairpersons of the various boards and commissions and also the commissioners. We've, we've passed through these at least once or twice on them, so we're not making these decisions just necessarily randomly this evening. So first, I'd be looking to accept a motion to reappoint Richard Bonneville to the Lower Allen Township zoning hearing board for a term of three years, beginning January 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz, and I have a second from Vice President Karen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Next, I'd be looking to accept a motion to reappoint Mark McGala to the Lower Allen Township zoning hearing board for a term of three years, beginning January 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz and a second from Vice President Karen. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, just one question. I apologize I didn't catch it earlier. He is the alternate, correct? And we are reappointing him to the alternate position?
Yes, I believe he is the alternate.
Okay. I'm sorry I didn't notice that earlier, but...
Commissioner Nagy, would you feel more comfortable on this motion to bring it back and add, amend that to be the alternate?
I mean, I'm comfortable tonight if we just, yeah, amend the motion, as long as we can confirm that is what his role is, or what we're, more importantly, I guess, appointing him to.
Okay, Vice President Karen, that would be your prerogative to take your second.
Oh, okay. I will amend the motion to reappoint Mark McGala to the Lower Allen Township zoning hearing board as alternate for a term of three years, beginning January 1st, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice President Karen and a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Is there any discussion or clarification? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Mr. Solicitor, I assume we are okay with the process there?
Yes, indeed.
Thank you. Moving on to, I'd be looking to accept the motion to reappoint Allison Schuler to the Lower Allen Township Authority for a term of five years, beginning January 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown and a second from Commissioner Nagy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Next, I'd be seeking a motion to reappoint Allison Schuler to the Lower Allen Township Stormwater Authority for a term of five years, beginning January 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown and a second from Commissioner Nagy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Next, I'd be seeking a motion to reappoint Mark O'Shea to the Lower Allen Township Development Authority for a term of five years, beginning January 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner, or Vice President Karen, and a motion, and a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Next, I'd be seeking a motion to reappoint Michael Washburn to the Lower Allen Township Planning Commission for a term of four years, beginning January 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz and a second from Vice President Karen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Next, I'd be seeking a motion to reappoint Scott Dunkinson to the Lower Allen Township Recreation and Parks Board for a term of five years, beginning January 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy and a second from Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. And next, I'd be seeking a motion to reappoint Christopher Pushart as an alternate to the Lower Allen Township Civil Service Commission for a term of six years, beginning January 1st, 2025.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown and a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Is there any discussion? I just have a question, and forgive me for not knowing the answer to this right now, but is, who is our current Civil Service Commission, or Township Civil Service Commission person?
Did you want to list up the people on it?
Oh, okay. I beg your pardon. Is there a chairman?
It's down there. It's the last one.
Terry's still the chair, still runs that?
Yeah, they have a reorganization. We have a schedule for meetings, so they're reorganized once a year, so they'll come in and reelect whoever's in charge.
Okay, and is that currently Terry?
Currently, it's Terry.
It's currently still Terry, okay. For some reason, when I was going through this, I had recalled, I don't know if Terry was, was Terry going to leave at some point, or did I just miss that? Or, yeah, okay. Okay. So he's still the, currently basically running that when it, when the, when the need arises?
It's the same as it was last year. The same members, with the exception of Chris being reappointed.
Okay.
He was the alternate before. He stays the alternate.
Right, yeah. I got it. Okay, thank you. I have the motion and a second. I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. And next, I'd be seeking a motion to appoint Rebecca L. Davis as the Township Secretary effective January 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice President Karen and a second from Commissioner Nagy. Is there any discussion? Okay, and I just have a question. Several years ago, we, we had, Ms. Grundon was our Township Secretary, and then when Ms. Grundon moved out to Public Works, Mr. Sterling took the role, and then we, we changed that up to be the, essentially it was the Township Manager. And I'm just curious, could you just kind of explain the role? I mean, I understand the basics of the, some of the basics of the Township Secretary in that, and I'm just wondering the role and how you felt that fit into the manager's role, purview?
The Township Manager was the Township Secretary for years, going back to the 90s and 2000s. It wasn't until, honestly, I don't remember when it changed over to somebody not the manager, but it's actually fairly common that managers are secretaries. The only role is to sign things.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, got it. Thank you. And we're, and we're happy to have Rebecca Davis in that role as she becomes our, our new Township Manager in 2025. I have a motion and a second, and I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. And next, I'd be, and finally, I would be... And next, I'd be, and finally, I would be looking to accept the motion to reappoint Rebecca L. Davis as Assistant Treasurer, effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, and a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. That concludes all the business that I had on the agenda this evening under the President. And we'll be moving on to any business pertinent to Lower Allen Township. If anyone's joining us this evening to bring up any business to the township, now is the time to let us know. Seeing none, we'll move on to public safety.
Mr. President, the resolution is, was in your packet, it was a resolution of the township to support the, it talks about Josh Laird, who was a career volunteer, a career firefighter in Frederick County, Maryland, met his untimely death. And he was also a volunteer in Pennsylvania. A lot of the career folks, firefighters in, in Maryland actually live in Pennsylvania. When he met his untimely death, the Pennsylvania statutes do not allow for him to be, essentially, because he's employed outside of the Commonwealth, and it's where the death had occurred, they do not allow for a death benefit. And so essentially, what the resolution asks is that the board desires that the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Commissioners add to their legislative priorities the removal of restrictions for the Pennsylvania Line of Duty Death Benefits for all Pennsylvania residents, employees, first responders, outside of the Commonwealth. Okay, that's the request.
Director, so going through this, is this something that's coming broadly from the field right now? Or is this something that's originating right here in Lower Allen, like the idea of?
Now, this was partly a request that came to us to support this. So it's not coming from the field.
Okay, and so, or like, is PSATs doing, like, I'm, I'm sure that something's going to them as well. I mean, there are much larger numbers, there are smaller municipalities, but there's a lot more PSAT municipalities in the township, or in the, the state. So this is something that, you know, this is kind of all happening together with other local municipalities. I got you, okay. So this is just for discussion tonight. So commissioners, if we want to talk about this a little bit now, we can just talk about it freely. There's no request for action. I would just say that, you know, once this, whether we pass it or not, I would certainly bring this up at the Executive Committee in February, or before, to the PSATC Executive Board, that, you know, that this would be coming down the pipe. If what you're saying, and it's coming, it's originating all over the state, from the different municipal organizations, are coming, are gonna be going to them, then we'll probably already hear something about it prior, you know, or prior to me saying something then, so. So commissioners, I mean, is this, do you have any questions for the director, and is this something that we would be in favor of, to put on a future agenda?
Yes.
Yes, it seems common sense to me.
It's an unfortunate situation the way it is, but, you know, that's the law.
Yeah. And so, what generally happens, so this, this sounds like it'll be, like PML will probably be getting this from their various organizations, probably a fire chiefs organization that they're part, that they're secretary for them, but then the league for all the cities, they are, I, I, I just think that we would just put this on a future agenda and kind of get it there. And then what happens with PSATC, and I can't speak for all the other municipal organizations, is in February, we start developing the legislative priority at that meeting. And then come April, there's a lobby time, lobby day on the Hill for all municipal and local governments, including school boards and things like that. And so there's a day of just lobbying, and then this type of thing, if it makes it, you know, it sounds like it probably will, then, then Capitol Hill's kind of, they get a lot of people coming into their offices, basically saying, we want to support this. So that, so by April or May, I'm assuming, if it becomes legislative priorities for all the organizations, that's about when the state will probably be hearing about it, is what I'm assuming. So, good. So I, I think the, I'm seeing is the direction is on a future agenda, on the next agenda, we can see this for action. Good. Thank you, Director. Was there anything else?
No.
Moving on to community and econ, community and economic development, Director Sweeney.
The only thing under, under community and economic development is discussion and possible action to accept a ninety-day extension for SLD number two thousand and twenty-four, that is, the sheets located, the batteries and bulbs on Hartwell Drive.
I'll make a motion, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy, and a second from Commissioner Brown. And this is just standard?
Yes, sir, this is standard. At this point, right now, the sheets, they, they did come, go before the planning commission, which they were tabled at the planning commission, and Sheets did have one meeting with the residents, and we're gonna have likely at least one more before they come back to the planning commission. So this is really necessary for them to, to work with the public on some improvements.
Okay.
Director Sweeney, how, how, how has that initial meeting gone? Do you, did you get any feedback?
There was, there was lots of feedback, and, and like I said, we, we will be scheduling another meeting, and Sheets will be coming back with some proposed changes for the public to see, prior to going back to the planning commission. So it was good. Sheets had, that the design team gathered some, I think, some useful information with some improvements, and they're gonna propose those to township staff, our engineers for review, and ultimately, the public as well.
Great. And do you see that being a January planning commission meeting?
Most likely February planning commission. I think we'll, we'll hash all the things out under review in January, and then they'll likely be back in February for the planning commission meeting. So honestly, I mean, the, we very well may have another ninety-day extension, honestly.
I'm looking at the date here.
Yeah, yeah, well, most likely, we'll, we'll go beyond and have another ninety-day extension.
Okay, got it. Well, it's good that we're, you know, given the space for good, responsible growth in the township. I was over at the Capital City Mall prior to the meeting this evening, and, and this area is booming over there. Orderly, believe it or not. It seems orderly, but it's booming, so.
Add a Sheetz to the mix next year.
Yeah. So very good. So commissioners, directors, looking for action on this tonight, if anyone would feel so inclined to make a motion? Oh, I, I, I'm sorry. I have a motion and a second. Thank you for reminding me. On the, the question, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. I think I'm getting the holiday bug. A good bug. Moving on to Public Works.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. President. The single item on the agenda for Public Works is discussion and possible action for permission to advertise Proposed Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero-two, updating chapter two oh nine of the Township Code, Vehicles and Traffic. You would have seen a memo and the ordinance language in your packets. This is really to update the ordinance as it relates to existing signs within the township since the last update. This just allows essentially for enforcement of those signs. So this is nothing more than just a routine update to our ordinance.
Can you just, and, and Director, I know that you're, you're, you're getting into this, so I'd please defer to Director Davis also. But can you just describe, in, in your views, how this could possibly negatively impact residents? And, you know, and maybe the, the top two or three things that somebody would call and say, if we took action, or we enforce something, that they would just be?
I don't know what negative impacts there could be. The signs are already installed. They're part of the required, especially in Arcona, they were required by the subdivision and land development plan. The additional signage in this ordinance was put on Cedar Cliff Drive in response to our technical assistance through LTAP and recommended by the LTAP engineer. So I'm not sure. I think they'd have positive impacts on our community.
Okay, right. And then, go ahead.
As I say, my only question, I talked to Director Powell about is especially the Arcona section and no parking. And I know we've obviously gone through that considerably, so I just, that was my only concern, was any of this being new to those poor folks up there, and he obviously assured me this is already in place, and...
Yeah, and that's where I was focusing, my question.
Yeah, exactly. I was concerned about any more restrictions for them up there. I would be very hesitant on that, but these are already in place and things that they are accustomed to at this point.
I, I, because I know that when, there was a time over there when they were just developing the other side, or before the west side of Arcona, and there was this, the problem with people parking on the street, and then somehow, and I forgot why, it was when our former engineer was here, Dan, they put some traffic, like no parking signs and things like that, and then, oh man, it just became problematic from the other side of it, and then they were taken down, and then it became an issue of whether Charter was going to do something with some of it, or part of it. So I, I just know they're very sensitive over there, and now with the parking issues, that's, that's all.
These signs have been there for quite some time.
Yeah, okay, great.
If there is ever any changes in policy, we could always just amend the ordinance if that's necessary.
Yep.
And if I can jump in here, Mr. President, really, the purpose of this is to make the ordinance enforceable. I mean, the signs are there, but if we don't enact the ordinance, you know, District Justice can't enforce it. So we're adding this, you know, really creating what's, what's actually there into the ordinance that can be enforced.
Right, yeah, and all that impacts a resident when they do something wrong, and then we enforce it. And I, I'm not saying that this is something that isn't needed, because I absolutely a hundred percent agree, and I agree that we need to do it, and agree that it's the right thing to do. I just want to acknowledge that new stuff for residents, you know, especially on something that they're, where they're, something's being enforced on them that they might have felt like they had some leeway, it usually, there's a curve for their acceptance of that. And so I just wanted to just, you know, know that we, you know, just acknowledge it. And I'm glad that we're doing this, because it kind of sets the new standard, and, and we move forward, and the signs have been there for quite some time, so it's just a matter of now, if somebody violates this and it becomes problematic, then the District Justice can do something that has teeth, so to speak.
Correct.
Yep.
And Mr. President, this, this would just be a motion to advertise an ordinance, so I think it would give the public the ability to, to understand the ordinance, and probably would take action, so that's helpful. I just had two quick questions, so, and this is just for my own ed, education. When would the last time we had, would we have done one of these traffic device ordinance, just out of curiosity?
We didn't do one in twenty-three, so the last one we had done was in twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay.
We typically do them at the end of every year, to update this ordinance with any signs that have been installed throughout the year.
So they're an annual ordinance typically? Okay, that was my second question. Okay, thank you. And if there are any other questions, I'm happy to make the motion to advertise for the, this ordinance, twenty twenty-five zero-two, updating chapter two oh nine of the Township Code, Vehicles and Traffic, known as the Traffic Control Device Ordinance.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Vice President Karen, a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Is there any other discussion? Now, I do have another question, though. So we'll just see this in the, in a future meeting, once the advertising requirements?
Correct. You notice, you notice it's for twenty twenty-five, you need to advertise it first, your next meeting can be January thirteenth.
Right.
You can enact at that point.
Right. Right, so the public's not coming to a hearing, though, on this?
But there is no hearing.
Right, right, okay, understood. Okay, so possibly in, in January is when we would take action, once the advertising requirement is done. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? All right, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Commissioner Reports. This evening, we will be going into executive session after Commissioner Reports. And looking at this, I don't believe there's any need to come out for any actions. So after Commissioner Reports, we will adjourn to executive session. We'll start Commissioner Reports this evening with Director Sweeney.
Mr. President, I do have one, one item to discuss with the board. We have a rather contentious docket coming up for the zoning hearing board in February, and I would like to request the President of Solicitor Minor to help represent the township for that docket.
Okay.
I, I don't think this is an action item, it's just more of a permission to, to have Solicitor Minor there representing us.
I would appreciate a motion, but you can do it in January if you wish. I think if you, if you want to hear more about the zoning matter, we have plenty of time to discuss it. So I'm, I'm comfortable either way, because ordinarily, I know, we, you prefer to have, have some, some background on the matter, but it, so it can either be taken tonight, or you can be aware of it, and take it, you know, appoint me at a future meeting if you want to have some information about the actual zoning matter.
Right, I guess the only question I have, and I trust the motive behind it, of having this solicitor there, is actually just, you know, the Sunshine Act, as far as this not being on the agenda as an action item?
I'm a little uncomfortable with that, because usually, community development, I think the Director is just getting ahead of it, because there's some concern that we've had a lot of correspondence back and forth, and the party is represented. So I think the, the concern is to get this done as soon as possible. So even though the, the actual hearing is not till February, you know, we've spent a great deal of time on this, and, and staff has involved me previously, so I think at some point in time, we need to make that formal. But again, if you're not, if you're not comfortable taking action tonight, certainly this could be on your next agenda.
I, I would, if, I would prefer to take action, because the zoning hearing board meeting's not till February.
It's not gonna be till February.
Correct, so we have two meetings in January, where we could take action to assign the, the solicitor. If that's okay with the board, I'd prefer to do that, rather than, then we'd have to advertise this action, have staff do that tomorrow.
Can we get a memo and then, with the?
I'm happy, I'm happy to provide a memo with some context.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that'd be great. And, and that's, Director, this the first time since you've been with us, that we've done, I think we've done this? And that's how I understood it was always done, where we just had the request, it showed up on an agenda, and then we just...
It was the actual action item?
It has been, yeah.
Okay, I didn't realize it was an action item. Okay, very well.
Yeah, or at least it came through, yeah, it did. It came through a memo, and then we would always act on it when Mr. Eby was, was doing that. So that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'll provide a memo for the next.
Yeah, we just want to follow the book.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Super. All right, Director Holt?
Nothing for night, just a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. And we're looking forward to a twenty twenty-five as, as good as twenty twenty-four was.
Mr. Solicitor?
I'll echo those comments, because nothing formal, but please, happy holidays, everyone be safe out there, and we'll see you in twenty twenty-five.
Super. Director Knoll?
I just have, I just wanted to mention that I did sign and go forward with the engagement letter so that Brown Schultz, Little Brown Plus can continue to work into the twenty-three audit. So that people can get that done, and we can move into the twenty-four audit, so we're hardly caught up in current.
Okay, and then the twenty-two, is there?
It's in review.
Okay.
They're finishing, they're, they have staff that reviews everything, and then they'll publish the final audit.
Okay, good. Thank you. Mr. Sterling? Ben? It's good to have you here. Director Davis?
My congratulations on this last, on this last, on this year's meeting, and we shall, everyone, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Mr. Greenwald?
Mr. Manager, this is your last meeting, you have to say something.
I didn't prepare anything. I was trying to think back to the first meeting I attended as the Finance Director. That's when, I, I didn't attend meetings prior to being named Finance Director back in ninety-five, or whenever it was. I remember, not clearly, but I remember being kind of excited about now coming to the commissioners'. the Commissioners' meeting and being important, you know, like being a part of the township. I've become jaded every, I'm kidding, okay, I still like coming. You just get old and cranky, so. But, yeah, it's, it's, I mean, it's part of my life, it's twice a month for the last how many years, and it's going to be different, because I'm used to my wife asking me on Sunday, "Do you have a meeting tomorrow?" And sometimes I say yes, sometimes I say no, now she's never going to have to ask me that again. So, yeah, it's been...
You can still come to the meeting.
I can, I might, yeah.
You always need a heckler.
You need somebody to stand up and say, "In my day..." No, I, again, as I've said before, at, at the luncheon, I've worked with many, many Boards over the years, and everybody's been very supportive of staff, very thoughtful, and we've had our share of characters, but, but we, we always seem to, we get through the low times or the tough times and come out strong on the other side. So I'm very excited about the, the staff we have, the minimum, the, the average age has dropped significantly amongst our leading, you know, our, our top...
And up here.
And, and up here, too, so we kind of follow suit with the, with the Commissioners. And I'm very comfortable leaving it in their, in their hands. I'm impressed with all of them, so you'll, you'll be fine going forward.
Well, thank you again for, thank you again for all of your service to the township, our residents, all the stakeholders that have run into you over the years, and we wish you well.
Yeah, thank you.
But I'm sure we'll be in touch, though, before the end of the year, because your last day's not officially till...
Yeah, I'll be working up until the 31st. I might not be doing work, work, I might be cleaning my office out.
Okay.
You know, hauling some files out, not files, but personal effects out to my truck. But, yeah, I'll be here.
Got it. Good, well, thanks again. Commissioner Nagy?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, just happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everyone. Seeing the, the Christmas cards, I apologize, I did not, we did not get to Christmas cards this year, so.
You have a baby.
Please don't take a slight to any for that, but other than that, thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I just, Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year. It's, it's been a good year, I enjoyed working with everybody, I thank you for, for all you've done, provided to me, and answered all my questions, and also to my fellow Commissioners, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with each and every one of you, and I look forward to next year.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to be concise. First, Merry Christmas to everybody, and Happy New, Happy Holidays. I wanted to apologize to Director Davis and Director Powell for miscounting. I, we had one fewer card and one fewer stove top potpourri for tonight, so I'll try to, I'll try to rectify that for the next meeting. Brief library update. At our most recent meeting, I was elected Vice President of the Library Board, and we also decided to move forward with a capital campaign, beginning with, beginning in 2025, so I'm expecting to be heavily involved in that, and am looking forward to it. Expect a, I forget what they're called now. Lindsay works in development, so she knows the lingo, but, you know, expect me to reach out at some point about that. Finally, Tom, there was a story at the luncheon that I wanted to share, but I didn't get a chance to, because I kept, I kept letting other people go up, and then eventually it was, it was time. So my first interaction with Tom was actually during my first township meeting that I was attending as a member of the public, and it was virtual, I was watching on YouTube, and at a certain point, there was a, there was discussion about the Joint Drug Task Force and the, and at one point, a certain former Commissioner said something along the lines of suggesting that we remove funding for the program if we can't get reimbursed for it. That sort of lit a fire under me, maybe a little bit angry, and compelled me to submit some comments, and, you know, being remote, I, I was worried that I might not be able to express myself, but I reached out to the township YouTube page, and Tom responded immediately, and he, instead of doing the bare minimum, and maybe, you know, making me disillusioned about local government and whatnot, he took it upon himself to help me get that message out, and read my statement into the record, which I greatly appreciated, and I, I think is, you know, reflective of your commitment to public service and to the residents. So I know that I already told you that after, you know, during the luncheon or after it, but I just wanted to share that here, since I had the opportunity, so, thanks again, Tom.
Oh, you're welcome. I think I was just excited and surprised that somebody sent a message over to YouTube. I don't think it had ever happened before then or since then, but it was like, whoa, message.
Well, there you go. That's all, Mr. President, thanks.
Thank you. Vice President Karen?
Yes, just wanted to wish you well again, and I hope you keep in touch. I'm very much hoping, hoping to, you know, see you, I know I'll stay in touch with you on social media, but that's not quite the same, so you have to stop back occasionally, okay? Okay.
Planning on going to the MM conference.
Oh, good, good. Okay, wonderful. Yes, hopefully, that would be great. And then I just want to wish everybody and their families a wonderful holiday, Christmas, New Years, and just want to thank everybody for their hard work and dedication to the township and the residents. Just honestly, I know it sounds cheesy, but I am really honored to just work and serve with everybody in this room. You make a difference every day with what you do, and just very much looking forward to continuing to work and serve with you into 2025, so thank you.
Awesome. Chiefs, Captain? All right. Got everybody. No, I would start... Yes, Chief?
As, first off, I'd like to say, also from the Fire Department side, again, congratulations to the Manager of Note, I've been on a long time, good work with him, and I wish him nothing but the best for us. I appreciate the township taking and offering me the position, and in the short time I've been here, I've had a great interaction and enjoy serving this community and getting to know the community better. And lastly, I do also wish everybody here and who's watching, have a holiday, but as your Fire Chief, please, 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 it is the worst time of the year for accidental fires, accidental falls, trips, slips, so please be safe. We would like to meet you on good terms, not on bad terms over the holidays. Please do that for me, that's all I have.
Roger that, thank you, and Merry Christmas. I would just like to say Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year to everybody, and I would echo all the sentiments, but Vice President Karen, you basically said what I would like to also say, and that is, it's just an incredible honor, this year's been a, quite a transformational year in Lower Allen Township, and just to serve with everybody, the conversations we have outside of the meetings, and of course, in these meetings, we can have debate, we can have disagreements, but, but, you know, everybody in the room, I always get the sense, you know, we just, we're going to move forward, and we can disagree. And so, thanks, everybody, for all the hard work that goes into running our township, our residents. I know they very much appreciate it, and something was said, I think it was at the Manager's Retirement Get Together here at the Township last week, and that was, we don't get a lot of complaints in the township, well, I shouldn't say we don't get a lot, we get our share, but proportionate to the kudos that we get here in the township, and that's just a testament of staff and management, staff, the employees, and the Commissioners, of course, that, you know, we all work together, we care about our communities, and so thanks, everybody, and this has been a really good year, I feel. Mr. Manager? Yes, again, we're going to say goodbye to you here, it's your last meeting, and I would just like to personally say thank you for, you know, seven years for me. I remember some of our first conversations, I remember the very first lunch that we had. You, you, you know, you sat me down, it was a very nice lunch, by the way, thank you, but, but he, Tom wanted to make it crystal clear, this is Tom's ship, to some degree, and, and, but, but with that, over time, when you, what I've witnessed is when you get to know Commissioners and the elected officials, that you, you also help mentor them into the responsibility and role that, that we have. And there's been a few times, several times, you and I have not seen eye to eye on things, and I've come into Tom's office sheepish on a mon, on a Tuesday morning, or a Wednesday morning, and just said, "Go ahead, lament to me," you know, and, you know, we, we haven't had it out, though, like that, but it's been a great relationship, I feel, and thank you for everything that you've done, I appreciate it. And I, I've learned a lot in government, a lot having to do, you know, with, with you having so much experience here, and this has been really good, so thank you. Yep. Is there anything else for the good of the order this evening, before we all just say Merry Christmas and have a Happy New